Good evening, welcome everyone to the Eclipse Monday, August 21st, 2017 Board of Education Meeting of the School District of the City of Dearborn. Trustee Secretary Petlicoff, will you please read the call to order roll call?
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Humud?
Here.
Trustee Nassar?
Here.
Trustee Mead?
Here.
Trustee Petlicoff here. Trustee Thorpe?
Is busy in Kentucky. He was busy watching the eclipse.
The eclipse is what I was told.
Great.
President Lane?
Here. Before we move on Superintendent Maleko and I decided to have a moment of silence. We have a recently deceased staff member, so we wanted to have a moment of silence in honor of Barbara Warmba who was a food service employee at Dearborn High School. So we'll have a moment of silence. While we're having a moment of silence, maybe we can have a moment of reflection too on just generally where we all are after the unfortunate tragic events really at the University of Virginia. So let's have a moment of silence and a moment of reflection. Thank you. Now Trustee Petlicoff, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag Executive Directors Dr. Jill Chokol, Dr. Yusuf Masalim, and Shannon Peterson will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Now don't be nervous.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can come up for your certificate. Directors, you are almost as good as the.
You don't want your certificate.
Certificate, yes.
Thank you though for doing it.
Superintendent's update, agenda items, Title II funding.
So one of the things that we have on the agenda for passage is a resolution opposing the Title II funding cuts. I happened to, and I'm going to get into it a little later, had discussions with our Secretary of Education a couple of weeks ago in Grand Rapids. This has been promoted by not only the state superintendent but also the Wayne County. And Wayne County Rees has already passed a resolution. So that's an agenda item and I'm going to ask Dr. Chokol to come up and just talk about some of the things that it supports with the funding and I believe it's roughly $1.3 million of support to the school district.
Thank you Superintendent Maleko. This year we saw an increase in Title II funding. So the funding was actually $1,368,391. So typically the funding was about three-quarter of a million dollars, anywhere between $715,000 to $770,000. And the purpose of these funds is to provide professional development for teachers and principals as well as develop leadership capacity for school districts. So the amount that, what determines the amount of Title II for districts is all tied up in what the actual title accounts are, Title I, Title II, Title III, et cetera, so that the amounts do change depending on district demographics. The funds, there are also funds that are dispersed to non-public schools so that money flows through the districts and the principals or the leadership at the individual non-public schools develop a professional learning plan, submit it to our district for their portion of the funds. And we work with them to collaborate in some professional learning. We've invited them to events that we've had in the past and so forth. So Dearborn for the last six years has spent a good portion of their Title II funds on instructional coaches under the class size reduction and that is a fund that supports instructional coaching in elementary schools through job embedded professional learning. The remaining funds through Title II have been spent on professional development in the core content areas, reading, math, science, and social studies. And the curriculum co-chairs, which are administrators and teachers, develop the plans for what will happen in that content area, professional development plan, and then Title II will fund as much of that as it possibly can. So there are some other items that are also purchased through using Title II funds such as professional texts. There are daily five materials that have been purchased, reading apprenticeship, and so forth.
Dr. Mead?
Now, what is the argument of the administration to do away with these funds when they're so significant?
That is the question of the hour.
It's just announced that there'll be a cut, but there's no justification for doing it.
Right. I think Dr. Maleko probably has a little bit more to say about that relative to, you know, to the meetings that he's had, but it, school districts across, you know, the state are very concerned about this because it is a valuable source of funds for this very professional learning that is so important to keep up with changing standards, assessments, and to develop professional learning communities and so forth. So there are many groups that are marshaling their forces to demonstrate why these funds indeed should not be cut and we certainly support those efforts.
And that would segue way into the meeting, you know, as mentioned, the state superintendent was even telling us to go and oppose this. The National School Board Association and the states, or the National Superintendents Association as well. And so one of the things, as I kind of mentioned a couple of weeks ago, I, as I know the board is aware and there was some press on it, I was selected to go and meet with Secretary of Education. And I would say it was a very good meeting overall. I really believe that it was a good dialogue and that was one of the areas that all of the superintendents that were there, there were about 20 of us. We did talk about the Title II because I think there was an impression given from, through advisors through the department that this wasn't effective use and that's kind of the impression that was given. But I would say that it was positive in that we gave specific examples. So like the examples that Dr. Chokol gave or the examples of, you know, teachers going through the reading academy and training. One of the things the secretary was big on is inquiry or project-based learning. So some of the comments that we made were, well, we need to train and develop our staff in order to, you know, move. And in Dearborn, we've moved in that direction. We have the My Learning Plan for all of our students. We could still probably do some more work in moving in that direction, but that was something that she was definitely championing. So I would say that, you know, we know that the budget they were given, I believe it was like $13 billion in cuts. And so there's tough decisions that are being made, but I can tell you that we championed it. It was clear, again, it was a positive dialogue. I can tell you some of the other things we discussed. You know, we didn't get into charters or private because we know that there's kind of a disagreement on that with the current administration. So instead it was how can we work together and make, maybe leave an impression on areas that we think we could have maybe moved it a little bit, which might be Title II, for example. Here are concrete examples that all the superintendents talked about and how it helps our students. The other thing we talked to the secretary about was just, you know, the teacher shortage. I mean, we're feeling it in this district today. I know Trustee Petlicoff, you were here, is we hired, we had 100 teachers in the room, new hires. We're still looking to fill positions. We have shortages in special ed. So what we tried to do as superintendents is to basically say to the secretary, champion this with us, work with us and make the education profession something that we want to attract more people into the profession. And so that is one of, that was kind of the angle that we took and so that was another area. Some of the other things that we talked about were like school accountability when we met and one of the things that happened is they did deny the Michigan plan, but I guess there was some kind of a mixed message because they were saying submit it. And so we talked about more local control, allowing the state, and you saw Dr. Patterson last month presented on where the state wants to go with more of a growth accountability system. So we talked a little bit about that. There seemed to be, you know, some agreement there. Again, the Title II, we also talked about like career and technical and early college programs. So in Dearborn with the programs that we offer, real positive. And I even sent a letter afterwards inviting, you know, maybe for a visit in Dearborn. You know, maybe it's a way to have some influence and that's one of the things I've tried to really work hard with state legislators, but now we're hearing Title II cuts and things. So who knows? Maybe it'll leave an impression and there will be a contact to a local superintendent to get some input. Because I can say, like, there were some other budget items that I could tell that it was, you know, there were advisors that were saying it's not effective. So Title II specifically, it was advising that, you know, class size isn't effective or these training programs. So as you're making those cuts, that's kind of what I think is happening. It's, well, what can we, what can we cut to reduce that $13 billion?
So it was a priority issue and what they saw was, that was low-hanging fruit.
Well, for me, public schools are the public good. Public education creates a good public, a good informed, educated public. We need people to be informed, to be educated. We need the public good now more than ever. So for strong public schools, we need, we need training. We need strong staff. You don't just take someone, I mean, we can buy computers, we can buy whatever technology, but our people have to know how to use them. And it's about training people to increase their skill level. And we need to do that now as much as ever because we're bringing in so many new teachers. So, yeah, I don't agree and I hope that we'll continue to show our strong support for public education, not by taking dollars away. That's not going to help at all. That's, that's just, we've endured a couple decades now of cuts, so that's not the right thing to do. I think we all need to repeat that message to everyone, so, yeah, thank you.
And we did talk too about other budgets and not cutting Title I, you know, the support for English language learners and special ed. So those were other areas.
And with Title II, I mean, everybody agrees that the quality of teachers is key in public education. And this is a cut that directly affects our teachers who really should be our biggest investment here in order to educate our students. So that's really sad to see under this administration.
So right.
So just in closing, I, again, you know, when we have the ability to have a seat at the table, I talked to the board, I talked to the unions, let them know where we're going and I chose it to represent the district and try to hopefully leave an impression on the need in Dearborn schools for the benefit of our students. I do have one other agenda item. We have our retirements. So I would like to congratulate Mary F. T. N. George over 12 years of service, Olga Dub 24 years of service, Julie Cantz 21 years of service, Mary Late over 17 years of service, Maria Schmidt 35 years of service, Amy Stoner over 15 years of service. So we want to thank our retirees and we congratulate them in their retirement.
Non-agenda items, meet the new principals?
So we're very excited that we have the first day of school starting up on September 5th. And last year I was proud that I did get into a lot of buildings. I had 419 visits last year, beat the previous year. Beat the record of 394. I will plan again to be in every school. Last year I did this. I will go to every school the first week to visit, work, go with staff. We will also have cabinet out there and any trustees that might be available, because I know you have day jobs and things, and we'll be sending out a sign-up sheet if you wanted to go for the opening day.
Thank you.
Yes. So that is a very positive. We're excited to welcome our students, all the, you know, back-to-school events. And so we did this last year and President Lane and I talked. And so although they've been introduced, I wanted to refresh everyone's memory about some of our new administrators in the district and we did this at this point last year as well. So there's going to be actually a PowerPoint coming up. So we have Dr. Winifred Green who's been at the Berry Center. She is now taking over responsibilities of the STEM in the ACE program. And, you know, we did have a retirement over there, so we did have a need for additional staff to provide support. So we have Mr. Osama Badun who will be the assistant principal over there working with Dr. Green. And so now they have the DCMST Michael Berry Center Magnet STEM in ACE Program. Ms. Iona Gerasi is now the new supervisor of adult and community education, so she picked up the adult education responsibilities. We have other new principals. We have Mr. Dan Blessing who was approved by the board at Howard Elementary, Ms. Amal Alcadre, principal at Snow Elementary, Ms. Zainab Jabril, principal at Smith Middle School, Ms. Zainab Teba, principal at Lindbergh Elementary, and Dr. Josh Tyne is the new principal at Nowlan Elementary. We have some assistant principals, Mr. Samir Declala, assistant principal at McCullough Unis, Ms. Hibba Abdalbaki, assistant principal at Fortson. We have Ms. Amal Abdullah, assistant principal at Miller Elementary, Mr. Marwan Salami, assistant principal at Dearborn High, Mr. Pete Cochianas, assistant principal at Etzel Ford. Tonight we do have a couple of other ministers are going to the board for recommendations. I also wanted to mention that we have meet the principal nights that are coming up. So what I've done, anytime a new principal is hired, we set up a meeting in the community. We allow both the parents and staff, we have separate times for staff and parents to come and meet the principal and I generally will go out and introduce them and I've been doing this since I've been the superintendent. So we're going to continue and we have the dates up there. And we also send that information out via the local school blog so that parents are aware. I also wanted to call up right now, Mr. Mike Assaly, I believe, is here. If I can ask him to come up, he, effective tomorrow, will be the interim director of special education for Dearborn schools.
Thank you. Superintendent Maleko, President Lane, and board trustees, I would like to start by thanking each of you for the opportunity to serve the district in this capacity. Special education has been a passion of mine for a very long time now. To be the interim director is truly an honor. I am truly excited about the transition moving forward. I would like to assure each of you that I will work very hard to ensure our department embodies the district mission of students first. Again, I'm very excited for this opportunity and to continue to build our special education department. Finally, I can't leave without saying my thank yous. I would like to thank Ms. Michelle DeJager, our leaving director, for her great mentorship over the past year. I would also like to thank Dr. Maleko and Executive Cabinet for entrusting me in this position and giving me this great opportunity. And of course, I would like to thank my wife, who unfortunately is at home. We just had the birth of our fourth child, so she's, she's got her hands full. I promised her I'd help as much as possible, but I also am under the understanding that I'm probably going to be pretty busy for these next few months. So I'm very excited and again, thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Assaly. So I have a few other announcements. I know that some of the board, we put in the board briefs and you've seen the construction here at ASC. So I wanted the public and everybody to know that we're going to be officially opening the welcoming center on September 5th is the projected date when school opens. So we'll have a welcoming area reception for our community and guests to come in and it's marked out front near the student services department. All the other staff would, that are part of ASC can still get in with their badges that they have. Actually, took mine off right now, it's right there, but they'll be able to swipe in. And so we'll have a one entrance location and most school districts do have a model like that. So that's what we're going to do starting on September 5th. And we'd welcome if any trustee would like to come and, Ms. Ali Bazey or Mr. Cedarland could take you if you want to go see the new human resources area. That'll be in a location that is convenient.
I already got a sneak peek.
Oh, good, good. So the other thing that's coming and we will announce it next board meeting, we talk about, you know, I'm out with the principals and in the buildings. Well, we have the chatting with superintendent events that are going to be scheduled. We have a tentative schedule and we will unveil that in September for the next board meeting. It's a great way to connect with the community, just as when we go and introduce the principals. And we've had, made some decisions based on that feedback we've gotten from parents and the community assessment being one of, one of them. And I also want to highlight Ms., our district, really, the board, everyone, the things that we're doing, you're going to see the strategic plan later, but Ms. Fatmi Faraj and the work she's doing in the school improvement process, but not only her, but the entire team, that includes board, support staff. We have parents involved in the school improvement process. We have teachers, we have, you know, administration. We were honored with getting highlighted in an article that goes out to about over 300,000 viewership across the nation through ASCD, SMART Brief, and district administration. And then we were asked to actually present at the state conference based on that and our model that we're implementing. So I know some of the trustees have been on some of the visits. If anyone would like to go, we can set that up. I do plan to recommend next month to also have a presentation by Ms. Faraj because we're making some changes as we enhance that model. So hopefully we'll have another board presentation coming up soon. But again, I just wanted to thank everyone because it really is a full team effort and that just highlights the things that are going on. But why are we doing it? We're doing it for our vision, you know, students first. And the board did get one of these and I know these are going to go out, I believe, David, when we go out and recruit employees and other things, we're going to, this is our watermark, our trademark and our message that we've branded, so we'll continue to do so. So thank you to the board for their support.
Recognition and acknowledgements?
None.
None? Okay.
Citizen participation, I do have one blue card. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit times. This is a non-agenda item. It's transparency and the drug issues in our schools. I guess he's got on here two separate topics, Mr. Adele Mose.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first issue, as Trustee Petlicoff mentioned, is transparency and I'd like to speak to you and I understand that I would not get a response, but also the public would get to know more about the transparency here we have at the district. I filed some FOIA's, which is the Freedom of Information Act requests for the district for some emails, public emails between the districts regarding the vacancy and the previous appointment. I did receive a response from communications and the response, which I can give you, I don't know if you have one of them, did state the charges that it would be charged to get those emails. So in, I would read it here, to review 75 emails containing the word vacancy, we estimate it would cost about 6.5 hours at a total of $636. So that's the rate of $97 per hour. So there was a lot of going back and forth about this rate and it was saying that, in another response, that the lowest person being paid is hired to do this collection of the requests and to give us the information, but it's the total compensation. Now, the federal U.S. Department of Education mentioned that these kind of requests should be, actually, the first hundred pages should be free and they should not be that much and that substantial. You can also check their website and they did mention local districts. So it's not for the U.S. Department of Education. As I got the response, it was saying that the guidelines state that they're not for local district, but rather the U.S. Department of Education. But it did say in that document that this is, follows for the local districts. And I, as I know, we do follow state law here, but we also follow the federal law. And the federal law says that most of the first hundred pages should be free of charge. So, and it speaks large to the transparency that we have here at the school district. If somebody wants information and you say you are transparent, you are an open book and I go ask for information and then I would have to pay a substantial amount of my paycheck just to view that information, that is clearly not, not transparent in my opinion. The other issue, I know I only have three minutes, that I'd like to speak to and hopefully we can get more, not just the conversation, but some actions taken. And we're about to start the school and high schools are about to resume and middle schools. And you're aware of the drug issues that we have as a national problem. It's a national epidemic. And especially here in Dearborn recently, if you've been reading the news about the doctor who was arrested by the state police for giving painkillers like Skittles, more than, more than, almost half a million. So I'd say, you know, I spoke with the superintendent about the drug issues. He does realize it's a problem. We kind of differ on how big the problem is in our schools. But I believe that when we have many students who are surveyed and they say they are on drugs, we cannot just turn the blind eye. I believe that the board must direct the superintendent and ask that there is a committee or there is some task force to make sure that laws are being enforced and that drugs in our schools have no place. We've had too many students and alums who have overdosed in Dearborn and that's tragic, that's unfortunate. We have also some, you know, I've received many calls from parents that tell me I have to speak about this issue or I have to be their advocate, since their own children are either on drugs or they're being pressured to have drugs. And there are those groups in schools who would act like a gang and try to get these students into abusing those drugs. So I hope that the board makes a conscious decision on making sure or putting funds, you know, and making sure that we're tackling this problem and we're proactive about it and that we involve whatever we need to involve as far as the police or the specialists, but more of how do we treat these students who are already hooked on it and prevent the others from getting it. So thank you very much for your attendance and I hope to hear some correspondence. Thanks.
Trustee Petlicoff? Mr. Mosef, just to reaffirm, I spoke at the last board meeting with the city relations subcommittee meeting we just had with the mayor and the police chief. We actually, this was a topic of our conversation. The chief is going after a grant and we are planning on putting together a task force that combines a partnership with the city police department.
That's good to hear.
And the school district. So we've, we've been working on this problem. We're aware of the issues and we're very much moving forward with something.
I hope also it's been taken to the schools, like for example, those parents, there has to be zero tolerance for dealers who are inside the schools, whether they're students or outside. And I know it's something that the school is, unfortunately, has to deal with because it's, it's a huge distraction and obviously it's something that is major. It will have a lot of students drop out, many issues from drug abuse, so I'm glad that's being taken.
Yes, yeah, we are, we are working on it.
Thank you.
And we have a meeting set up too.
Dr. Maleko, go ahead.
I was just going to say we have a meeting set up from the city relations committee with the chief who wants to partner in looking for grant opportunities.
And also Henry Ford College, we're trying to partner with, with all of our resources. Trustee Barry?
On the first issue that Mr. Mosef spoke about, I, not too long ago, somebody asked me for a copy of a report that I spoke on. I said, no, no, that's confidential information. I guess the question would be, are reports FOI-able? I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I mean.
I told that person to call the district and find out.
So we do have to follow state law with FOIA requests and we have the entire policy. David Mustin oversees it, but everything is on the website. It's there, it actually references the state law. Reports are, but there's legally confidential information that has to be redacted. And that's why when you have employees that it does, you know, for example, if you want to look through a lot of information, that's a lot of manpower hours, kind of in response. And that's why, because there's student information, there's personnel information, there's all sorts of things. So when you're dealing with student discipline, you're dealing with identifiable information. So that's where there has to be a review through that. But technically, you know, any kind of documents, yes, could be FOIA'd, but information will be redacted that is legally protected under student FERPA rights and/or personnel rights, where we redact names.
I was going to say employee, yeah.
Yeah, employee rights and personnel rights as well.
And who determines the cost of all that work?
What I, and David, maybe you can speak, isn't it the lowest, the lowest possible employee that could do that? When you have high-level confidential student information and/or information personnel, only certain people can access that. That's why it's the higher price.
Correct.
But we, we're supposed to go with the lowest level so that we keep it cost-effective, but when you're going through information where there is that kind of sense of information, it's at a higher level. It's at a high level, it's at an executive director level.
Well, and most of the documents, I think a lot of documents are posted online anyways. All the documents for our meetings are posted in advance, our agenda, and everything is taped. So most of the stuff is FOI-able or it's already in the public sphere anyways, so.
Well, a lot of.
All right, quickly.
Could I just make a comment?
Wait a minute then, wait for Dr. Maleko. Oh, wait a minute then, wait for Dr. Maleko, yes, please.
A lot of times, we get a FOIA request, sometimes not even in the local community, it could be a state group or even out of state, and we say it's here, so what we do is we just email them the link. There's no cost to it. We say it's already on our website, here's the link to that information. You know, we try to be as transparent as possible. But again, when there's student confidential information, we will do everything we have to to protect that, the privacy.
And that's federal.
Just quickly, I didn't read the last sentence. It says the cost to review all 2,250 emails between trustees were totaled in excess of $18,000. So that's our rate, if we, each email would be $8, that's the rate to review each email. Now, this, again, federal law states that redaction charges should not be charged to the person requesting those information. So just telling you what's, what I know, what I read about state law and federal law, so that's for you to review.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next item?
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Dr. Maleko reminded me that we skipped.
The donations was not on the.
No, donations or, yes, donations, yes, thank you. We don't want to deprive Ms. Peterson of the chance to come.
She was waiting.
Waiting to jump to the podium.
I was wondering, I'm like, oh. So we have a donation of $2,600 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Khalid Abdullah to be used for PBIS. You're going to hear a common theme here. A donation of four wireless microphones has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Khalid Abdullah to be used in the auditorium. A donation of $500 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Khalid Abdullah to be used for Dearborn Basketball Association sponsorship for Salina Intermediate students. A donation of $1,400 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Khalid Abdullah to be used for a charter bus to Cedar Point for Salina Intermediate students. And a donation of $200 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Mr. Khalid Abdullah to be used for a Cedar Point trip for Salina Intermediate students. So thank you to Mr. Khalid Abdullah.
Particularly to Mr. Khalid Abdullah by the Salina Community. Thank you.
All right, Trustee Petlicov.
Okay, approval of minutes for the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings, Building and Site Committee meeting, July 24, 2017, P., regular P-12 meeting, July 24, 2017, and City Relations Committee meeting, July 25, 2017. Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So move.
Support.
Okay, so I did want to make one comment on the regular meeting at page 17. It said that a letter would be scanned and sent to the trustees. I can read this paragraph exactly.
What page was that? I'm sorry.
It was page 17. So under correspond, acknowledgement of correspondence, President Lane acknowledged the letter that will be scanned and put into this week's board briefs. So I just wanted to request that in the future, either the date or possibly the sender or something more identifiable be included in the sentence, just for future reference so that anyone knows what it is worth.
Whether they got it or not.
Right, exactly. So that, that was my only critique of Mrs. Harris's near-perfect notes. Okay, well, they're, they're a pretty good job, and they're really long, so I appreciate that, but if we could mention what the letter, either what it was referencing or, so. Okay, so does anybody have any corrections to the minutes, additions, additions?
I called in the correction earlier, so it's already been taken care of. It might not have been.
Okay, so, good. Can we attach a unanimous vote to these acceptance? Yes, very good.
Yes.
Okay.